And we will continue with the festivities. You want to have a seat?
You New Hampshire, you New Hampshire guys.
That's okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, here we go. Well, go ahead and call this meeting back to order, please.
Okay, go for it.
Everyone, please have a seat.
Go for it. Make your motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are to the consent agenda. Item seven, we have, we have two of them, A and B. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Uh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson. Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, we are to item eight, a public hearing. Uh, Audrey, is this yours?
Yes, it is. Uh, it's mine with John Cuciardo. And this is a administrative code for a American with Disabilities Act grievance policy. It's something that John Cuciardo and I worked on. Um, it just provides a level before people can really file a complaint, we can fix things ahead of time. It should all, if anything happens, it should always be fixed at staff level. But there is an appeal process where it could go to council.
Okay, John, you got anything on this?
Nope.
Presupposed mandatory. Counsel, what do we do?
Approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Okay, 8B.
Uh, the next one is a housekeeping administrative code, and this is to amend our mobile accessibility in the city's parks and recreational areas. Uh, Nicole?
Uh, basically, this is just an update of the current admin code. Lightner Neighborhood Park and the Dog Park weren't built yet when this was put in place. It's just saying they're now constructed parks.
Okay. Any questions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and maybe a second? Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta. Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Okay, now we have first reading and public hearing, and there will be public comment on these, on item A.
Yes, and this is the first public hearing is required under the Florida Local Development Act to amend the development agreement from East Benita Active Adult Community. You have a, um, a letter in front of you dated February 18th from Attorney Chuck Bassinet making a request, uh, to amend the existing development agreement, um, out in East Benita. Chuck can explain it, and if you have any questions, John Dolmer can also provide any questions if it relates to community development.
Okay, thank you. Chuck, how you doing?
Good. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Charles Bassinet with the Henderson Franklin Law Firm here representing, uh, Lennar for you today. I'll go into this as much as you want me to. I mean, in simplistic terms, all we're asking to do is modify the developer agreement to provide for, uh, a maximum of 235 single-family units on the portion of the project that Lennar currently owns. There's another portion of the project that's owned by a company called SHR. They're limited to 500 units. None of what we're talking about doing, um, increases the maximum number of units that was previously approved under this developer agreement, which is 799. Under no circumstances can we exceed that number. It's just that we're providing for slightly more in the way of single-family homes versus multifamily homes. It does, in fact, uh, increase the trip generation slightly out there, uh, but by the same token, there's in excess of $220,000 being paid, um, additionally in road impact fees, um, by virtue of the increase in single-family homes versus multifamily homes because of your, um, ordinance difference in terms of the, the impact fees for single versus multi. I'm here to answer any questions you have. I just hate to take too much of your time at this point. I know it's been a long day.
Very well explained. Uh, do you have any questions for, for, no?
Let's move it.
Uh, let's go ahead and get public comment. And any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on this matter only, please come forward.
My only question would be is, what's the calculation when you're looking at, uh, going from multifamily homes to single-family homes? Multifamily has a smaller footprint, um, maybe? We always talk about units, we don't talk about, you know, floor area ratio when we're talking about residential, so we do that with commercial. That would be my only concern, that, um, how much more land is taken up where you had open space? And all that, the open space requirements will be the same and, and the same thing that it was for, uh, other single-family homes in that calculation? Or are you gonna have the same open space requirements that you had for the, um, I mean, multifamily homes?
Okay.
Because you'd be increasing the, uh, you would increase the open space requirement if you had that other, the calculation for the single-family homes.
Okay.
That's my question.
Okay.
Maybe you can answer that.
Well, we'll, I'm sure we'll get at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, any other member of the public wishing to speak this time, please come forward on this matter only, please? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. John Dolmer, would you like to come up and answer that question?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the design of the property stays the same. The only difference is that where multifamily buildings were once designed, they'll be replaced with single-family houses. So we're not looking at a change in the development pattern or the intent.
Open, open space, purview area, all that, all those calculations are to remain the same.
Open space regulations, all the other development standards stay in place as they are today.
Okay, alright.
If I, if I may, uh, this property's in the urban fringe category of the comprehensive plan, which requires extensive, uh, layers of buffers. And so, uh, this property, that could not change, no matter what the developer wanted.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just move it.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mike, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
Um, I just had a question. It said the, uh, trip generation got increased, but if we're going from multifamily to single-family, wouldn't it go down?
If, if you look at the way that, that traffic is generated, what, what has been found by the, uh, traffic engineers is that multifamily units generate a slight, uh, degree more traffic than single-family, uh, units. For what reason, I don't know. That's just the way it is.
You mean, single-family more than multi?
You would think that that would be the way it should be, but it's actually multifamily generates more trips than, than single-family.
Then how's it going up instead of down?
That's what it is. It's, there is a slight increase over what? Oh, the, because the mix of uses. The mix of uses, yes.
Okay, I think it's the other way around though, right?
Yes, the other way around.
Okay, alright. Yeah, in other words, single-family residential, more trips. More trips.
But a multifamily would be two families, and you would think that that would have more trips.
Oh, well.
Or is it per unit in a multifamily?
Well, actually, it's per unit. See, a multifamily, uh, a single multifamily unit doesn't generate as much trips, as many trips as a s- a single-family unit.
We're gonna.
Technically.
Technically.
Yeah, okay. Any, any other questions? Anyway, it, it ends up more money. Anyway, we could argue that. Uh, any other questions? Bill?
Motion to approve.
Motion to, oh, okay, we have a motion to, go ahead and send it to second reading?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta. Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay, and we are to item 10. Thank you.
Good evening, this is the second reading and public hearing of following, following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida repealing in its entirety Benita Springs Ordinance Number 1010, which had adopted the 2009 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code relating to unsafe buildings and minimum housing regulations, adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code relating to unsafe buildings and minimum housing regulations, providing for title and citation, providing adoption and repealer clauses, providing specific revisions to the International Property Maintenance Code, providing for conflicts of law severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and inclusion in the code, and an effective date.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Counsel, you have any questions on this?
Very important. Very important change.
Good, good. Uh, let's go ahead and go to a public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on this matter only, please come forward. I'm betting Ben's not coming to talk about this. Nope. Uh, okay, public comments closed. Uh, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? Roll call.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, item 10B.
Thank you. I have an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida relating to elections to provide for general elections of municipal officers to be held on the third Tuesday in March of even-numbered years to coincide with the spring primary for state and federal elections, revising the qualification dates to coincide with the change in dates for the election by amending Charter Section 13, providing for conflicts of law severability, codification of the Charter provisions, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient and, in, on file with the city clerk's office. If you have any questions as to the ordinance, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Counsel, any questions or comments? No? Let's go ahead and open this public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant. I'm speaking now, uh, as the original member of the city charter back in 1998, 1999, before we voted to become a city, and I was on the chairman of the city charter subcommittee. Okay. Uh, this is in regards to the election date. Now, what we had when we did the council members odd and even districts, they were all on the same, in other words, same date. If it was March, the second Tuesday in March originally, then the odd, uh, council members, chairs would, would be elected at that time, and two years later on that very same second Monday in March, or whatever it was, I believe, the even, uh, uh, members would be elected, and the mayor, and I can't remember where the mayor was selected, odd or even, but then, you, you get my drift. In other words, we have consistency for both the odd and even council districts. In this case, there is no consistency at the moment. If you do this ordinance, it should be consistent for the even, uh, what, this is what? For the even number, so then the odd number in two years' time should also be on the, what is it, second or third, uh, Tuesday in March? You follow me? Where I'm coming from?
I do, but I think you're.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
So that's my recommendation. Uh, the other recommendation would be, is to really, it, my, my own opinion would have been to check with somebody like Peter Bergerson at Florida Gulf Coast University to determine what would be the fairest and best time to do the city council elections, and maybe do it all the city council elections in the, uh, in the county on that particular timeframe. If you want to save money or something like that, but not rely necessarily on the state legislature pick, picking the date, or, for that matter, the supervisor of elections, who may for various reasons, uh, pick a date what is convenient to her and her staff. They're not the ones that count. It's the voters in the city of Benita Springs, or the voters in the town of Astero, Fort Myers Beach. Those are the people that count. That's the people that we need to accommodate. Not the supervisor of elections, not the state legislature, not the governor, or anybody else. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Uh, anyone else that could speak to this matter, please come forward?
Yeah, he makes a real good point. Supervisor of elections looks to have, uh, would like to have municipal elections in November, I think. All the municipal elections in November. Um, I think Fort Myers has theirs January, February. They're willing to pay extra money. They're always willing to pay extra money, but that's just them. And I think Sannibel doesn't fall, also, it falls in the spring, but also doesn't fall on the presidential primary, preferential primary date, or governor's primary. Hey, my term was cut short by a quarter of a year, because we switched, because I got elected in Mar- March, and was out in January. Might be good or bad, depending on who you are. Anyhow, um, or how you look at it. But it, it is right to consider, even if it's an expense of $140,000, or whatever that amount was, it was 40 when we originally moved it back to the January primary. I thought that was the right thing to do. But it is right to, one, don't mix it up in a general, because there's way too much stuff that's on people's minds. They're all excited about like, two things on the top of the ballot, and then they're out of there. And we'd probably be at the bottom. Have a separate election. I really think that's so important as the city of Benita Springs, to really get people engaged. Yes, more people come out probably through a primary for a president or governor, but really, to engage people in your municipal issues is really what you want to do. I would, I would spring the money to go ahead and have your, even if we're gonna have the presidential preferential, I mean, the, yeah, preferential primary in March, but the year after, again, like you said, the state legislature will start determining our election schedule. That's why we became a city, so we didn't have the state legislature in the county telling us what to do. So, I'd say spend the money. If it changes in the next cycle, because whichever party wants to get the advantage, keep it in March. I think that's really right, so. Go for it. Pardon me? I mean, go to March. Should've kept it in March in the first place, but go to March, and, uh, then from there on in, keep it in March, because you're gonna have a next cycle, two, two years after that. Won't be fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure? I would pay $50,000 to have it today. So, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Kinda. Yes.
Audrey, can, can we do that? Can we change it to, to March? And what would be the pros and the cons of that?
That's what, that's what we're, that's what this.
No, 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 I don't, that's one time, but I mean, I think what Alex was saying, let's do it every year.
Forever?
Um, actually, I have it set up so you would, the current ordinance, alright, let's go through. City Council has.
Let's, let's keep it really simple.
Yes.
The answer is, yes, you can do that, but just not today. You can, you, you could, you can always decide to have an election at a, at a different time.
Yeah, okay.
Even if you say you made it permanent, it's never permanent.
At this point, the election, the change in election date in Section 1 is permanent until such time council changes it again.
Ta-da!
Ta-da! So, we're doing that.
I.e. every two years.
Right, it, right. It does say of even-numbered year, so next time will be 2016, after will be 2018, so the odd, 135, will be in 2018. So that's already contemplated in this change, unless the primary date changes again, or there's some reason you want to change your date of your election, or the legislature, and you decide again. Up to you guys, it's your, at your pleasure.
And, but this time, for these purposes, what we're deciding to do is to have it during, in March. And that's what this ordinance says, and that's what's on the table right now. So, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Audrey, you have anything else under those items? No? That's it, right? Okay. Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to any city matter at this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rosemary Putnam. I've been in Benita for 12 years. I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. The question about the roundabout, the Lions Club, of course, has had a very successful Wednesday market, and we all know that. My question about the roundabout is, will that affect the Lions Club Wednesday market?
Uh, well, uh, if that's your question, is that your only question?
For right this moment.
Okay, good. And we'd be glad to answer, is, we just don't have a dialogue coming on. This is for public comment, and if you have some questions after everybody else is speaking, we'll, we'll go ahead and answer that question for you. Okay?
Okay, so you don't know at this point what impact it's going to be on which businesses?
I think that's fair to say.
Okay?
Yeah.
Then we'll come back to that. This is more for the TV, because I, are there any members of the local Roots group here that are stationed at the promenade?
I, I don't know.
Okay, well, then it's for the TV. The Lions Club little, would like to request, since the pro, um, for-profit group of the local Roots has made a fortune down there this year, um, as well as at their four, at their four other locations, that they contribute $2,000 each for two students, and continue this on a continuing basis, since the Lions Club normally, um, will give four students a full ca, um, $8,000, $2,000 per year for scholarships. But due to the fact that the promenade, um, did so well, and we did so poorly, um, that we're challenging them to step up to the plate and to help our not-so-fortunate students here in Benita. Sure, we have great Benita bays and other affluent areas, but we have an awful lot that are not. And we normally, um, contribute over $62,000 back to the city. We're not able to do that this year because of, um, the loss that was sustained due to the promenade and their Fossa advertising at the beginning of the year. So, uh, we'd like to know if they can do that. And if you all have any suggestions of someplace that we can go to be more visible, we'd really appreciate it, because we try to help, just like you have helped too. We're trying to help those, um, in the area. I do have, um, some questions about fracking, but maybe I should wait till after the fracking presentation, because I was on the committee that finally got the Co-Brothers out of the Everglades, uh, down in Naples last year, and I have some good information. I think there are lawyers here. So I will come back at that point if you'll let me speak. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on any city matter, please come forward?
I'm gonna guess that Councilwoman Martin has something to do with this ordinance, and I want to thank you. Because, uh, back in day one, uh, when you were doing the local planning agency stuff in the comp plan, we banned any additional mining. That's why we were not gonna have any more borrow pits in town, that's awesome. And so hopefully, we're not gonna have oil wells, or fracking, or, as the conservancy said, well stimulation techniques. So, whatever was that the conservancy said, we should do that, because they were right about that, and they came to their senses over the bills that went before the legislatures here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They did. Uh, I was thanking them, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do want to mention, okay, 11-foot wide road, okay, I did mention this in the break. 11-foot wide road, I, uh, old 41, if you put a median down there, and you're gonna put two roundabouts. I asked the gentleman, and I love roundabouts, right place, you know, like right tree, right place? Right roundabout, right place. But I don't think that they're in the right place there. Reason why? Okay, I asked the gentleman, who I really like, I think he's cool, the guy from, uh, New Zealand. Do you know where we have our 4th of July parade? He said, "No, where?" I said, "On Old 41." He goes, "Oh." Like, meh. And you, you try to pack all those kids picking up candy, and all those folks so excited, squirted water at each other with a median in the middle, and squish, you know, the Lions Club float, and the, you know, your, uh, big crane looking like a pelican, or whatever you want to have it look like this year. You had a really fantastic float one year. The BSU trucks going down 11-foot, I think those trucks are, you know, they're, you can't have all those people and all that stuff in that wa, uh, not wide, skinny a roadway. I believe in, you know, some of those concepts of, you want urban oasis, you know, where people can walk across the street, north of Terry Street, where Councilwoman Martin's been trying to get that done now forever. Planters, whatever, you wanted to get that done, but really, south of Terry Street, that is pretty compact as it is. I think what you need is those wide sidewalks, moving the businesses towards the street, so that people see them go over there near Coconut, um, what is that, Coconut over near Miami? That's what they've done. They took two, two-lane wide roads and made it a, a four-lane wide road, cut that back, put in wide sidewalks, really wide sidewalks, and there's lots of activity, there's street furniture, there's... But putting in, and parallel parking, sorry dude, but that's the right thing to do. You don't want to be moving traffic through there efficiently. That's a problem. And urban designers will tell you, you want stay-put traffic, you don't want pass-through, and that's what our problem is right now, is we're passing a lot of traffic through there, but nobody's staying. And we want to support those businesses, so when you get the majority of businesses, economic development, who are saying, "We don't want this," are we being elitist and saying they're ignorant, they don't understand? That's why we have representative democracy, and I applaud you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
Uh, yes, Alex Grant, again, on the city attorney's report B. This is the proposed ordinance. There was an article in, uh, the April 27th of Chemical Engineering Use. There, uh, there is a hydrogel which could so-called green up fracking. Do you?
Can I make a copy?
Yes, you make a copy. You may want to look, Audrey, you may want to look at that when you do this ordinance. Okay? You can return that to me.
I'll return it. I'll get a copy made.
I, I just thought that might save you some grief down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
Good evening, Carolyn Gallagher, Cedar Creek resident. I just had a thought, and it's a question, and when we talk about the fracking, um, maybe somebody would be able to answer it, maybe not. The green sheet, um, background, paragraph two, first sentence talks about, um, about the applications for the state of Florida to drill or to abandon a well. Now, to me, abandoning a well is, how you do that is very critical. There is nothing in our ordinance that we're proposing, or even the changed words by the conservancy that talks anything about, talks about anything, or abandoning wells. So I'm wondering, how could that fit in? How should that fit in? And should we be thinking about it? That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, uh, we'll close public comment at this time. Uh, and, uh, we might as well get on to talking about this stuff. Uh, city attorney's report.
Thank you. I have two ordinances, um, here for you today. Uh, let me go with the first ordinance. I am going to be amending this ordinance, so we take out the logo.
I am going to be amending this ordinance, so we take out the logo. I realize that afterwards, we're talking about words, and I'm not going to try to create a trademark-type situation for words. As it is explained in the green sheet, we cannot trademark. There is a prohibition against municipalities obtaining federal trademarks for its seals. However, there's a wonderful state statute that allows it, and that's consistent with the case law, saying, you know, your remedy is you can have a state rule that would make it a criminal action. Of course, we don't want to make words a criminal action, because at that point, I now have a First Amendment issue. But I don't have it as to use of the seal. So this would just be a very simple restriction, that people would not be allowed to use the seal unless they received permission from the city manager.
Okay, good. Everyone understand that? Okay, would you like to get permission to advertise?
Permission to advertise.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, now we have item B, permission to advertise ordinance requiring any applicant is to fracking.
Yes. And, let me explain. Council has talked many times about trying to make sure we had an anti-fracking ordinance. Also, we were dealing with the legisla- the Florida Legislature, so at the time of writing the green sheet, I did not know they were going to take recess at the time they decided to take recess. So there was an impetus to try to get something on the books, because like the fertilizer ordinance, like a lot of vacation rentals, many times if they do a preemption, they allow any ordinance that's under this. There is nothing really in local level so much as to regulations of oil and gas drilling, and that's because, as well as abandonment, because most of that is regulated by the state, and the state does not allow duplication. I've had a very wonderful conversation with the Conservancy of Southwest Florida's attorney, Ralph Brooks, who's been helping them with this issue. I think there is, I know that he wants to set up a meeting with Caitlin, Jennifer, myself, Alex, and himself to talk about some of the issues. You have to be very careful in what you're doing. I am still not, I love listening to the public, because they don't realize that necessarily there's already been some communications. The language here is what Ralph is, Ralph Brooks, who's the attorney, is suggesting. But I'm still not sure about the adopting a prohibition would be something, we might want to do it differently, or even create something different. It is very clear that when dealing with gas, oils, and wells, we're very limited in our authority. And we are allowed to do things through our home rule powers, buffers, noise, sound, the normal police powers. And so that's what this ordinance intended to do. I have it scheduled, or if council approves it, I will schedule it for June 3rd, so I'm skipping a few meetings so that we have some time to work it out. And if I need additional time, I'll request that of council. So give me some leeway, but I think this is a good start to go ahead. I will work with the Conservancy, as I have been on the ordinance already, as well as any other groups as well, like, for example, the lady who mentioned that she was involved...
So you're suggesting that we give you permission to advertise this?
You give me permission with me tweaking it.
Make that motion, please.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this is to give you permission to advertise this?
With latitude, right. We're not scheduling it, the ordinance is not...
You're not gonna schedule this.
Until June 3rd. No, wait, until June 3rd is the date here.
No, you wait. Hey, look.
Sorry, you're mayor, I apologize.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to do this where we have some time, but we're also able to work it through.
Good. Not date certain. You're gonna, you've got some flexibility.
We're gonna try to still meet the date certs, but if I can't, I'll postpone it two weeks, four weeks. But allow us to work through this process and try to get the best ordinance, because this will be unique. This is the first time in Florida that I believe in a government is...
And that's all that I would, I think that that's what we all want, is we don't want you to do something that's preempted, there's no sense doing anything like that. If we have the ability and the authority to do something, and we should, then we should.
Right.
But if we do not have that power, we expect you to bring that back to us and tell us, "Okay, here's the things you can do, here's the things you should do." That would be great.
Exactly. And Ralph and I had, were very, had a great conversation the other day, where he explained the wells, the exploratory well converts automatically into a production well. So you have to be very careful how you, you only get like one shot at the apple here, because they'll take that exploratory and make it a production without any additional permitting process. The other thing that's interesting is, a pad might be located somewhere that seems not that harmful, for example, an empty agricultural field. I mean, it seems like it's far away from people and everything else. But these wells can go two miles underground, and it's amazing what they're able to extract and go forward with the process. But you're not realizing, once they start going from exploratory to production, the amount of traffic from one of these wells, as materials are being mined out of it, can be pretty outrageous in an area. So traffic and transportation is a big issue.
So, since this, when you bring this back again, you're going to have all these issues attached, I suppose?
I'm hoping.
As much as you can. Okay? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Carl, what do you got for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. One item on the agenda tonight. Several months ago, Mr. Pano came forward and was talking about the possibility of putting together some regulations for the launching and operation of non-motorized vessels from city facilities. Director Perino worked with Mr. Pano to come up with the proposed regulations, which are in front of you. If council ends up being okay tonight, conceptually with what you see, we will bring forward at a later date, changes to the administrative code, as well as changes to the parks and recreation ordinance. The item is in front of you for your review, and Director Perino is available for questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
What about you, Nicole? Do you, anything you want to explain to us?
Just some of the main differences that I wanted to explain. Current, in our current park ordinance for non-motorized vessels, any vendor can launch from our park facilities. They just have minimal regulations of 30 minutes in and out. They can't park in our facilities, they have to transport and then leave, things like that. We don't regulate if they have insurance, if they are safe vessels, things like that. What we put in place is, they actually have to come in and apply for a permit. They'll have a maximum of 20 boats allowed, with only 12 being launched at a time. They do have to provide us with their insurance policy. They have to give us their U.S. Coast Guard safety certificates for all 20 of their boats. There is a fee of $250 per year, so that every year, they would have to come in and show these things again to us to make sure they still have their insurance, their vessels are still safe. They also have to show us a copy of the safety briefings they hold, as well as environmental briefings, no feeding of animals, that sort of thing, as well as a list of all of their guides and agents that work for them.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Council, you want to go ahead and...
Make the motion to bring it back to us. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so you're just gonna bring us back kind of a form template?
Yeah, currently, this is a draft that's before you. We are gonna make some tweaks to it, and then we'll bring it back.
Good, thank you.
I'd also like to ask that Mr. Pano is in agreement with what's in front of you.
Okay.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, questions? Thank you, Nicole. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Got anything else for us, Carl?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Councilmember items, okay. Item A, approved recommendation for Veterans Committee. That's you.
Me, yes. Thank you, Mayor. About three or four meetings ago, we talked about the wounded warriors and naming the field after them, and of course, there was some concern by the Lions Club. I spoke to Nicole Perino, and she said, "We can't change the name of the park, but we can change, we can have a field dedicated for the veterans, and we can have a field dedicated for the Lions Club." It went through the Board of Directors at the Lions Club, and they concurred with that. And so, the Veterans Advisory Committee's seeking the council's permission to go ahead with that. And I don't know, Nicole, the Lions Club hasn't designated a field, but they're gonna be working with you on that, correct?
Currently, they have not contacted me, but I would be happy to work with them to name the other three fields.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
You would make a motion to name one of the particular fields?
The particular field that they were on when they did the...
Okay. And we have motion and a second? And any other discussion?
Nice job, Stephen. Thank you, sir.
Wait, hang in there. Thank you very mu- and thank you for taking the time to do that.
Absolutely.
Really cool.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to appoint a council member as a voting member of the Lee County Tourist Development Council, beginning July 20, 2015.
How many are eligible? By the way.
I think we're all eligible.
Well, for a two-year term? I don't know.
Oh! That's true. Let me see, uh...
Rock, paper, scissors?
Hey, do you, would you like to suggest someone?
I'm just thinking, right? Janet's not eligible, you're not eligible, I'm not eligible. Well, I guess technically I am, I could change my mind, but I'm just saying, Mike would be eligible, Steve would be eligible.
Yes, that's it.
You two on the end? I'm not sure.
I haven't resigned yet.
Well, I'm gonna make this easy. Who wants a job?
Yeah, who wants it?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I figured he would.
Done, done deal. See how easy that was?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that Mike, it's your job. That's second. Any other, let's do it before he changes his mind. Roll call. Roll call, hurry!
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Nah, yeah.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Almost came to his senses there for a minute. Okay, Mayor and Councilmember items. Bill, why don't we start down where you? You got anything for us today?
No.
All right, good. We'll go down to Stephen. We'll go mix it up there a little bit.
I do have a little bit, just wanted to piggyback on a couple comments were made earlier tonight about volunteers. The city couldn't be what it is without the volunteers we have, land planning, zoning, and so on and so on. But we don't have a social services department here in this city either. So for those of you out in the audience who don't know that, if it wasn't for the volunteers at the Benita Springs Assistance Office, Cafe of Life, Literacy Council, Salvation Army, we couldn't, we couldn't be the city we are. We could not, we couldn't handle the problems that they handle, because we don't have the staff, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the ability. So thank you, all the volunteers that have done that over these years. Thank you very much. I want to thank Matt Feeney for taking the lead and being such a professional on this revitalization in the, particularly the Old 41 roadway. Especially because I give Matt so much trouble about not only being a bright Notre Dame student, but an art history major doing this. I mean, that's a stretch for my imagination. He's done a wonderful job. For those of you who don't know Matt, you need to meet him and recognize what a fine gentleman he is, and what a great representative of the city he is.
Snappy dresser, too.
Yeah, that's still to be known. Anyway, Matt, thank you very much. And finally, there's a thing, look it up, called the Blue Zone, and it's came from a National Geographic exploratory on trying to determine why certain areas, the normal population lived well over 100 years old. And there were certain elements that created that, and they're easy enough to find, but food sources, and so on. Alan Weiss at NCH has taken this on as a project for his organization, and I'm honored to be part of the steering committee for that. You'll hear more about it as we go, but I want to keep informed as we start to make a little bit of progress. It's based on a community-wide health system that is driven by the individual and the infrastructure that allows the individual to do the kinds of things that need to be done. So, food sources in the schools, locally grown food sources, the ability to be able as citizens to walk and ride safely through our cities. It's a comprehensive plan, is a comprehensive opportunity for us to do something in this community broadly, not necessarily Benita Springs, but broadly through this community, to make people healthier. And that's the Blue Zone. Take a look at it. I'll be bringing more to you as we go. But one thing I did last week, I took some of the Blue Zone people around Benita Springs and showed them some of the things that I thought were very unique and important for the health of this city and the welfare, the YMCA, our community health center. But more importantly, our ability to be able to create complete streets and create an environment where health is important, and the quality of life hinges on our ability to create a healthy environment for this culture. So I'll keep you informed, I'll let you know what goes on. I asked Dr. Weiss how he could bring this to the forefront, and he said, "If it works, we will be an area that's recession-proof, and will be the area where people want to live." So it's got a huge impact for Southwest Florida. I will, third time I say it, I'll keep you informed.
Thank you very much. Come down to Mike. What you got first? Nothing? You're good? Janet?
I'd like to just take a moment. I have a few things because of the time, but the one thing I don't want to pass up an opportunity to say is that Chris Griffith, we all know Chris, I think most of us do. She was a guardian for the honor flight that went up to, with taking the veterans up to Washington DC on Saturday. And I commend her for doing that. I think that's pretty awesome that she took her time to go up and do that. But because she did that, I heard about the whole process of the honor flight coming into RSW Saturday night, so my husband and I went as greeters. And if you ever get a chance to do that, the next time the honor flight comes in, it is awesome, it touches your heart. And Mike and his family was there, and it was just awesome. But again, I just want to commend Chris Griffith, a member of our community, for doing that. It was awesome.
Thank you very much. Peter, what you got for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to start, I guess, with an announcement here. I unfortunately can't go, I'm gonna be out of the state. But next May 12th, for those that don't know, there's gonna be a meeting at the Lee County School District, and urging folks to go up in support of the Benita Springs High School. Carl, I'm sure you and others will be up there. I really wish I could go, but for those that need that information, it's May 12th at 2:00 PM at 2855 Colonial Boulevard in Fort Myers, telephone number 239-337-8303. Please do go up there. Or you can contact Mary Fisher, Jeannie Dozier, Kathleen Morgan, Steve Toiber, and Pamela LaRiviere. Encourage things to go, move forward, please, with the high school for Benita Springs. And the second thing is, we all know, we've had these discussions over and over again, as have previous city councils, change, people resist change. It's human nature, but I think we are definitely on the right track on Old 41. I want to commend Carl, I want to commend the county commissioners for working in the county and working in unison with this, on this project. There will hopefully not be too many hiccups, but there will be growing pains. But I think in the long term, I really know in the long term, that it's gonna be a wonderful thing for this city, so thank you, everybody that's been involved with that.
Thank you, Peter. David?
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder that this Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Benita Grande Fire Office is the 50th anniversary for the fire district. And Bobby Bird mentioned about our celebrate Benita, and with 80, if that number is correct, that's a tremendous amount of folks, and 8,500 people. And I have to give credit to our community policing unit, because without them, I mean, you know, that's why we have zero incidents, because of them, in my opinion. And thank you, Janet, for reminding me about May 15th. Flags are to be at half-staff in honor of peace officers Memorial Day. And so when you see a police officer, make sure you just say, "Thank you for your service," like you would do with a military person. And, you know, these are federal, state, and local folks, that officers that have got killed or disabled, and in the line of duty, so we thank you all, we salute you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to let you guys know, about seven years ago, you've probably heard about this, I
local folks, that officers that have got killed or disabled, and in the line of duty. So we thank you all, we salute you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, just to let you guys know, about seven years ago, you've probably heard about this, I started kind of an informal organization called the Five Mayors of Lee County, and the five of the mayors, we started, started wine and dining them over at the cafe over there, and it, it's turned into something really great. And now we are the six mayors of Lee County. And Nick Bedos, we had dinner last night, we hosted, Benita Springs hosted the dinner this time, at the Hyatt Coconut Point. Nick really appreciated that. But anyway, it was not, the irony, I'll call it irony, wasn't lost on him. But no, he's, they're doing great, Star is doing great, I'm really proud of them. They're, they've got a lot of questions, they're going through a lot of the really similar things that Benita went through, our staff is helping them out. It's a really great thing, and all the mayors are helping, helping a sterile long, really tight-knit group. And the Coconut Hyatt Point, I couldn't be prouder that that is officially Benita Springs. What an awesome place, what a great group of people, what a great group of professionals. They really, really treated our visitors from around the county, just, just like Kings. It was really, really a great time. So I, I want, that's going to end up being something great, that's going to carry on way beyond me, whoever the next mayor, the next mayor, next mayor, that's going to last on and on. We're, we are, the mayors in Lee County, we're one. So that's an awesome thing. Also, the, I want to bring up the fence, the dreaded fence over Benita Middle School, that's going to get started this week. They're going to get started this week on doing that during the school year, they were going to wait till school's over, but they decided, nope, they're not going to wait, they're going to do it. So you're going to see great things happening over there in short order. Uh, and then I just want to make one last comment on what happened here tonight. My father, he passed away a couple of years ago, he worked so hard after the life was sucked out of Old 41, when New 41 got moved over. Everything he owned was on Old 41, and he worked for years with the Old 41 Business Association, with the CRA, and everything else, to try to get something to happen there. And time and time again, they would start out with a plan that was this big, and it would get nibbled away at, and, and it was like ruining a really good bowl of soup. I mean, you know what, it, this ingredient was taken out, that one was an ingredient, until it was left with really nothing there. And that's why I talk about 40 years, this was the plan that should have happened back then. This is, this is what you did tonight. Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you, Matt, thank you, Carl, for doing this. I, I know there, my dad would be proud, and you made me proud, so thank you very much. Uh, and with that, is there approval of minutes?
Aye, so move.
Then we have motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay, public comment, anyone wishing to speak this time, do so at your own, hi.
Well, I did ask to speak after the fracking.
You did.
Okay. I'm Rosemary Putnam, and a year ago, when the fracking problem was going on in Naples, right adjacent to the Everglades, I joined up with the fracking group down there, and we were against the Co-Brothers, which we know have a lot of money. And we did file a lawsuit, and we were successful. And the Co-Brothers ran back to Texas to spend their money very frivolously. And we learned a lot.[1627.33]